Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council meeting, the regular meeting we have for June 11th, 2020. We are participating via virtual as we have been due to the concerns over the COVID-19 exposure. The city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 and attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information and/or submit a written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card. Immediately following this meeting, we will be having a special budget meeting. Ken Jones, our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, will provide an update on the budget process, although we are adopting a budget is simply to meet the time requirements set forth by state statute. Due to the severe economic impact from COVID-19, there will be an additional future budget sessions to identify budget cuts, and also we will receive public input and participation options is being developed as well. So at this time, I would like to ask for a moment, if you could please join me in a moment of silence, I'm going to ask that we stay silent for eight minutes and 46 seconds, which is the length of time that Derek Chauvin knelt on George Floyd's neck, causing his death. Thank you, everyone, for respecting that moment of silence. We now turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Councilmember Arredondo Savage lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States.
American.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Thank you. With that, we're turning now to the meeting minutes. I turn now to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of City Council Meeting Minutes, Items 3A1.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams for 3A1. Is there a second? Anyone?
Second from Vice Mayor.
Second from Vice Mayor QB. I will now do a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Chin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye.
Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. With that, I would like to move on to items.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make another motion.
I know. Excitedness, the Board Adjustment Commission Meeting Minutes, Item B.
Yes, yes, I would like to move for approval of the board commissions and committee meetings, Items 3B1 through 8.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second?
Yes, Lauren QB, seconds.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. I'm gonna go do a roll call vote again. Councilman Navarro. Councilmember Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Chin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye.
And Councilmember Adams. And my cat votes aye as well. Sorry about that. Gracie, thank you, Gracie, for chiming in. That motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have our reports and announcements. I have one announcement. Juneteenth celebrates a very important event in the United States history, the ending of slavery in our country. And while the Emancipation Proclamation, someone can mute their microphone, that'd be fantastic. If someone can mute their microphone, Jennifer. I think yours is muted. Lauren, it's your, thank you, Lauren. While the Emancipation Proclamation has been signed in 1863 by Abraham Lincoln, it took until June 19th, 1865, for word of freedom to reach slaves as far as Galveston, Texas. We are all clear in the knowledge that the work of equity and inclusion equal rights and access to education, educational and economic opportunities, it's not done. We're also clear in the knowledge that institutional and structural racism, no matter what progress has been made, is still alive and well in our society. Of course, hard work and time are needed to address the deep-seated causes of racism and inequity, and we will need a strong coalition of individuals from across the nation to work for broad policing reforms and more equitable economic opportunities. The City of Tempe is committed to taking the time to shine the light on these issues and working for a better tomorrow together. In the past, I have been able to stand with members of the African-American Advisory Committee when proclaiming June 19th, at the Juneteenth in the City of Tempe. I know how important this day is and how much hard work they put into their annual Juneteenth celebration. I commend them for their work to make this a better community. I also commend the dedication and the commitment of our city's own African-American employees who strive daily to make our city a beacon of light, even in the face of these recent dark days. This year, in an effort to encourage the education, the reflection, and the renewal that Juneteenth brings to the forefront, the City of Tempe is marking this Juneteenth, June 19th, as a city holiday. The council and our city manager recognize more than ever that actions and conversations are needed to address the structural racism that, as we have seen in our society, we live with and have largely ignored for so many years. Good conversations are based on good understanding, so council and city manager offer the following sources as a beginning for a dialogue. "The Fire Next Time" by James Baldwin, "Stony the Road" by Henry Louis Gates Jr., "Native Son" by Richard Wright, "Unlynching" by Ida B. Wells, "The Warmth of Other Suns" by Isabel Wilkerson, "What to Slave is the Fourth of July" by Frederick Douglass, and Abraham Lincoln's March 4th, 1865, Second Inaugural Address. We are asking our employees to take time this Juneteenth and always to educate themselves about the African-American heritage and honor their lives, sacrifices, and contributions given to build the American fabric. Your time could come in any number of forms, advocacy, service, or education, but I am hopeful that our employees share their experience with each other as they come back into the workplace. The city is also proud to become one of the official sponsors of the annual Juneteenth celebration, when we are able to celebrate it again and hopefully in person next year. With that being said, I have a proclamation that states, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, formally abolishing slavery in the Confederacy, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's two-and-a-half-year-old Emancipation Proclamation and Declaration of Freedom for all slaves. And whereas Juneteenth is a day of reflection, a day of renewal that is inclusive of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and it encourages all individuals to take time to appreciate the African-American experience in this country and the valuable contributions and sacrifices made by African-Americans to this society. And whereas Juneteenth is meant to be a day on which we, as a society, pay honor and respect for the suffrage of slavery, recognizing the evils of slavery and how its aftermath has shaped our nation. And the Tempe Diversity Office, the Tempe History Museum, and the African-American Advisory Committee work together to celebrate Juneteenth and honor African-American heritage and remember the lives of slaves. And whereas on Juneteenth, we come together to listen, to learn, to focus on forging a better way forward together. This celebration gives all Tempeans the opportunity to commemorate the heritage of our city's African-American population as we renew our commitment to combat racism and injustice and hold to the values of inclusion, equity, justice, peace, and liberty. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as the official city holiday is June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth in Tempe, Arizona. With that, I will now turn over to our city manager for any announcements you have. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two announcements tonight. One is on the agenda regarding COVID-19. Just wanted to update mayor and council and the public that a couple of weeks ago, we had announced a tentative start or reopen of certain city facilities on June 15th, which is this coming Monday. In light of some of the recent numbers and trends that we're seeing and out of a continuing sense of caution, we are revising that schedule. The revised schedule, I think it's actually being pulled up here perhaps, or at least the banner is. The revised schedule is different from what we had previously tentatively announced to include the opening only of the following facilities, which would be the Tempe Public Library, the multigenerational centers at West Side, North, and Escalante, the Household Products Collection Center, and the compost yard up at Priest and Rio Salado. Those have been selected because we believe that with the proper degree of precautions, which would be mandatory masks for face masks for all employees and visitors, and those masks will be provided, an increase in hand sanitizer stations for the public, a requirement of keeping six-foot distance between everyone, which will be guaranteed to the extent practicable by limiting the total number of people who can be in the facility at any given time, temperature checks if needed, and also physical plexiglass-style barriers in areas where there is higher degrees of contact between employees and the public. Those modifications have been made and/or are being made so that when the public does in fact come back to those facilities, they will be amply noticed with signage at each of those facilities. We believe that those particular facilities, in addition to having those precautions, are an important hub of information, knowledge, and gathering for communities in our city, and especially vulnerable communities in our city, and that it made sense that for those reasons, we would reopen there and there alone, at least initially. The other facilities that have been tentatively listed will not be open before July 6th, and we will continue to monitor the information that we receive from the state and from the CDC and from the county to continue to make decisions as we move forward in a safe and fair manner. A second announcement that I want to make tonight, if Greg has that slide up, is on an annual basis, our Tempe Professional Development Network offers and awards scholarships in recognition of our former Tempe City Manager, James Alexander, and his commitment to excellence in Tempe. Two $1,000 scholarships are awarded to graduating high school seniors who are the child of a City of Tempe employee. Today, we're pleased to announce two winners. You could see them there on the screen, Ivan Felty and Catherine Laird. Both of their parents are city employees. We are very proud of both of them, and normally they would be in council chambers to receive our accolades, but because of the pandemic, we will recognize them in this manner, and we are excited for both of them and for their families. And that concludes my remarks tonight.
Thank you, Andrew, and I want to personally thank you for partnering with me on Juneteenth and everything that I mentioned earlier, as well as thank you for his leadership during the COVID and obviously during the times that we have right now. With that, I will now move to the consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. The council member would like to declare a conflict at this time. The city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. The public may also submit written comments via the Tempe City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card on tempe.gov/clerk, or you can email us via councilcommunicator@tempe.gov. Miscellaneous, and the consent agenda is as follows. Miscellaneous items, we don't have any. Awards and bids and contracts, Items 5B1 through 5B6, and resolutions, Items 5C1 through I am looking. Again, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member for the public for separate consideration. Do any of my colleagues, or first I'm gonna ask our city clerk, do we have any? I'm trying to find the hands.
We don't have any public hearing items, Mayor, and we have no request to speak for these items.
Okay. With that, I look, any comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Lauren QB. Yes, I wanted to remove 5B5 from consideration.
Okay, I will. Seeing none. Bear with me here, I'm trying to find something on my... Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to move, approve the consent agenda as read with the exception of B5?
So much, Mr. Mayor. Lauren QB, second.
Who moved it?
Arlene.
Arlene. Councilmember Chin made the motion, and Vice Mayor QB seconded it. All those, well, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Councilman Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Chin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Going once.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. I'm referred back to item. There's 5B5, awarded professional services contract to DW Architects Planners for the Community Center Campus regarding the library campus master plan located the southwest corner of rural and southern. Councilmember or Vice Mayor QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall from previous discussions, and my memory may be faulty, and I did email staff that there's been a lot going wrong this week. Oh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
I'm so sorry. So I just had a question, because I thought there had been discussion about perhaps co-locating some housing, perhaps even permanent affordable housing or sheltering. It's this human services campus that we're planning at the library, and I just wanted to see if that was still something to be considered in the scope of work, or that that had been removed. And again, I may be wrong about this, but I thought that we had that as one possibility that we would look at for co-location of buildings and facilities with some housing, be it permanent supportive or be it sheltering.
All right. Andrew, can you, who would you have in staff on the line that can answer that? I can't see. Andrew.
And perhaps, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I have a suggestion. I'm happy to put a motion forward to support it, but would just ask if we could look back in the record and see if that was discussed, that co-location of housing that we included in the scope of work or for consideration, anyway. I know this is just the very beginning of drafting this possible contract.
Hey, Mayor, this is Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Hey, Robin.
So I guess I would say just a couple of things to follow up on that. I don't recall the conversation about housing there, but I do remember a conversation about additional space for human services, like a human services building. That I do recall, and I do recall maybe some adaptive recreation permanent facility. I don't know if that revolved around housing, but I honestly really, Vice Mayor, don't recall the conversation about housing. I thought it was leaning more toward human services.
You know, I just, I believe, go ahead.
Anyway, just in regards to facilities, I thought that was the direction.
Okay.
Again, I'm happy, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Before we go any further, I think Marilyn can join us right now to answer some of those questions. Marilyn DeRosa.
Yes, hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this is Marilyn DeRosa, your director for engineering and transportation. for engineering and transportation. And early in the in the conversation of this campus, I honestly don't recall, I recall separate conversations about permanent supportive housing, and that this campus was meant to address the kind of issues that Councilmember Arredondo Savage mentioned, is finding a more appropriate housing or more appropriate footprint for the for human services, and possibly bringing some some services that we provide through our community services group to that campus. So, it's a little bit more expansive than just looking at this campus, because the first thing we're going to look at is the function of each of those departments, and then talk about how they interrelate and which ones, what kind of space needs they have in order to operate efficiently. The permanent supportive housing conversation was separate, and I can't really speak to that. If there's more conversation you'd like to have about that, I would think that you could, someone else on this call could speak more intelligently to that than me.
And Mr. Mayor may speak?
Is Lauren? I think Naomi can also answer some of the questions before I go to Vice Mayor and then back to Joe.
So, seeing, yeah, so seeing, oh, did you say I should speak or not? Sorry. Yeah, so, I mean, and again, I could be wrong, and it could just be a Friday packet, but I do recall some discussion, if it's a human services campus, that there might need to be some area where we'd have some temporary sheltering in the way of, you know, I help or some kind of shelter. But again, I'm not sure if we could just look back into the record and just see in a Friday packet, and allow that that might be a possibly discussed if we have discussed it in the past.
Okay. Naomi? Naomi Farrell, before I go to Councilman Navarro?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the human services, as far as the library campus, it was for a human services department building with talking about, in the scope as far as would be there, as far as the services we offer, and some possible additional wraparound services, but I do not believe in the scope that there was any mention of affordable housing. We had talked as a department as far as permanent supportive housing, but it was not connected with this this project.
Yeah, no, I never mentioned affordable housing. It was about possible shelters, you know, just shelter space, and the possibility of some permanent affordable, permanent housing, supportive housing, but my emphasis was on shelter beds as a possibility. I kind of recall that. I'd be happy to look back into it if you could send me the documents. And again, my support, or, you know, I put forward a motion for this, but I just would like to see, you know, I did act about it in an email, but I know there's been a lot going on, so I just wanted to look back into the record.
Okay, so, as far as like shelter, it is possible, that possible was a conversation as far what possibly could be provided with a human services building, but we can go back and look at notes and provide some additional information.
Thank you. The discussion was about co-location, so thank you. I so appreciate you taking this seriously. Thank you.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mary. No, I just definitely support the project that's being submitted right now. I do agree that, or I do remember that it was about helping to expand the footprint within the offices, community services, so they can provide and be more functional within that area. I think if it was discussion on sheltering, I do not recall that, and if there was a topic that ever comes to that, I hope that that decision would not just be solely made by the council on the placement of that sheltering, but would involve the community of how we place our sheltering, because that's going to be very strategic within our neighborhoods on how we manage and help our homeless community out and find best solutions for where that placement will be.
Thanks, Joe. Any other council members have any comments on this before I look for a motion on item 5B5?
I'm with approval, Mayor. This is Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
It's removed by Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Second.
Second by Councilman Navarro. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. Councilman Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
That motion does pass seven to zero. Next, move on to the non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on this matter, and the city clerk will provide a council member with a disclosure form at this time. Miscellaneous items and bids and resolutions, item 6A1 is the holding first public hearing. Adopt a resolution levying the first school year 2020-21, the annual assessment for the City of Tempe's Downtown Tempe Enhanced Services Improvement District, ruling on objections, making corrections, approving a new district map, and approving modified assessments. This is a public hearing item. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards for this item?
No, we do not, Mayor.
All right, seeing none, any comments or discussion from the council? If not, is there a motion on item 6A1?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Keating, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chin. Our roll call vote, Councilmember Navarro? Council, Councilmember Navarro, Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
There's Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next item is 6A2, is to award a professional services contract to Logan Simpson Design Inc. for the archaeology of the 8th Street Multi-Use Path, Phase 2 tasks, 4th to 14th project located along 8th Street between Rural Road and McClintock Drive. Are there any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6A2?
Mr. Mayor? Just want to say that, you know, the multi, 8th Street Multi-Use Path was delayed because of the significant archaeological finds. That's the bad news, and the good news is that there's significant archaeological finds that we really see a gray house and then a whole Cremaria district, and it's pretty exciting. And I know Logan Simpson has been a really good partner with the City of Tempe, and although this is a costly project, it's so necessary in updating our historic inventory, move forward with different multi-use paths and different uses for the public. So, thank you.
All right, is there a motion for item 6A2?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor QB, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Adams. I'm going to do a roll call vote. We have Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
And Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda that motion carries seven to zero. The next item on our non-consent agenda is the ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote of these items is scheduled for June 25th, 2020. The first item is section 6B1, which introduces and holds the first public hearing. So, adopted ordinance for zoning map amendment from the CSS to TOD and R4 TOD to the MU4 Transportation Overlay District, and a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan projected density map amendment for medium density up to 25 dwelling units per acre to high density up to 65, and the development plan review for a new four-story mixed-use development consisting of 187 dwelling units and commercial uses for Blue at Eastline Village located at 2058 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. The second final public hearing is scheduled for June 25th, 2020. This is a public hearing item. I don't know if Ms. Vaz or the applicant for Gamage and Burnham is on the line. Would you like to make a statement?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Manjula Vaz, the Gamage and Burnham. I'm just going to get very. I know, I haven't seen you forever. I'm so happy to see you all again, kind of, in this way. But I'm going to make a very brief presentation, and Greg, or there you go, we'll make a very brief presentation about Blue at Eastline Village. We're happy to answer any questions. We're certainly happy to answer questions at our next hearing. I am here today, again, Gamage and Burnham, my address is 2 North Central, sorry, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Jones Multifamily. With me this evening are Jeff Jones, Christian Sirson from KNI Homes, who's our architect, and Christian's going to go through some of the plans very briefly, and Rob Lane from Gamage and Burnham. Next slide, please. I think you all know that Jeff Jones has been working over the last decade to assemble the parcels along both sides of the east end of Apache Light Rail, to kind of accommodate the development of a mixed-use village. And as you may remember, DMB and Jeff were responsible for the original vision of the Eastline Village, and since then, we've brought along Gorman, who's developed the affordable housing component known as the River at Eastline Village, and on the south side, as you know, cul-de-sac is developing cul-de-sac at Eastline Village. So, tonight, we're going to talk about kind of the final component, which are two projects. One is Blue at Eastline Village, which is a multifamily development, and then the Lemon Street Houses, which will be on the north side, which are single-family, two-story affordable houses, which will be given to the City of Tempe Housing Department for affordable housing. Next slide, please. I think the site, you're well aware, is located northeast corner of Apache and Smith, and as you can see, in blue is the multifamily that I'm going to talk about, Blue at Eastline Village, and the yellow is the Lemon Street Single Family Residences that will be given to, or, you know, we are exchanging with the City of Tempe, as the city knows, we call Lemon Street Single Family Residence. Next slide, please. And just to give you just a couple of pictures, you can see the site, just next, kind of, this slide, the next slide, the site is, you know, generally vacant, underdeveloped, there's a one or two apartment buildings that will be coming down, but generally, this is the state of the site. You can kind of see the surrounding area, just give you a sense of it. You have the Smith Martin Light Rail Apache Station, kind of cul-de-sac on the south side, and then the post office, and I won't go on to this. I know, we know what it's like. Next slide, please, Greg. Just again, to give you very brief, as you may remember, the master plan started in 2016 with what, this was our original plan. Phase 5 actually ended up getting developed first, so that is the River at Eastline, the affordable housing. Phase, the south side, as you know, is being developed through with cul-de-sac, and now we're here to talk about what is the completion of the vision of Eastline Village labeled Phase 3 here, with Blue at Eastline, multifamily, and then the Lemon Street Single Family Homes, which are outlined here in red. Next slide, please. We're coming here tonight to talk about, in order to do this, we need a general plan amendment to change the residential density. This density request is consistent with kind of the residential density projected for the site by the Urban Core Master Plan. We're asking for a zoning map amendment to rezone the site to MU4, P8D overlay to establish site-specific development standards, and a development plan review for the design. Next slide, please. Just briefly, it's again, two, four acres, about two stories, two, four, sorry, two four-story mixed-use buildings, 187 residential units. Christian's going to go through it briefly. We have landscape and amenities. Christian's going to talk about the pool, the dog parks, and barbecue stations. We'll have co-working at the street level, kind of parking courtyard, some on-site street vehicle parking spaces, and then, you know, we'll have also the new pedestrian crossing, which is going to be a mid-street connection, so we'll have a new ped crossing to Light Rail Station going from Blue at Eastline to Smith Martin, and cul-de-sac will have the same one going from the south side north. So, we'll have a new pedestrian crossing that will connect both, on both sides, to kind of connect the village together. Next slide. Okay, with this, I'm going to turn it over to Christian, who's going to, oh, wait, hold on, sorry, one sec. So, this, sorry, I guess, so these are the briefly Lemon Street, this was approved by the DRC, and some of you may have seen these. We have seven two-story single-family detached houses on the north side of Blue, which are typically, as you can see here, about 1,900 square feet, four bedrooms, and these houses will be, four of them are in exchange for certain city-owned parcels that were in Eastline Village, and the three of them are being purchased by the City of Tempe Housing Division. But I want to compliment, like Levon and Naomi and Paul, who have been great, until all seven houses will be going to the City of Tempe Housing Division for inclusion into the City of Tempe's affordable housing stock. So, we're very excited to be part of that, and so I think, and that also helps kind of buffer as the Escalante neighborhood, where we put single-family houses on our north side to buffer kind of the multifamily on the south of these houses. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christian briefly, who can talk a little bit, give a very brief overview of the site and the design. Thanks.
Manjula? Yeah, is Christian there?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know. Carla, do we have Christian on the phone?
Muted.
Mr. Mayor, in the meantime, could I ask a question, Manjula? It's Vice Mayor QB.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yes, go ahead.
I just had a question, since this is directly on the light rail, and, you know, we have ample parking. I know you're just meeting our requirements. I'm wondering with the detached homes, single family homes, there are two-car garages, is there, can they be built in such a way to allow for conversion into another space? Should the family living there want to use or be attracted to living there because it's on the light rail, and it may not need that much space? Is there an opportunity to have it be converted, meaning more windows and more of a pleasant space and less, an enclosed garage with no windows?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, certainly, we can, we can do that. One of the things we'd talked to, I mean, you know, we were talking, thinking about families, and some of that, when we talked to Levon and Paul, we talked a little bit about, you know, there are certain people who may have, you know, trucks, they need bigger vehicles, they want to park there, but, you know, they, that, that, we certainly try to, you know, the design had been approved, but we can certainly work with the City of Tempe Housing Department to convert that, those garages, if that, if they would like to. And the City of Tempe will eventually own the home, so they can also convert that. But we were thinking, there are some people who may have trucks and other things that they may need to put in that garage, you want to keep, you know, you know what I mean?
Sure, I understand that. Just seeing the site right on the light rail, it makes you think that maybe this, these complexes are going to be more attractive to people who actually embrace light rail and public transit. I understand, thank you.
For sure, yeah. I mean, it was, but I appreciate that. I'll work with Levon, because I think Levon's actually going to fill that, so we'll, we can all work together with him.
Councilman Navarro?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to say, I mean, I, I kind of like how it's being presented as is, and with detached housing for potential families being able to use that, or to have an inventory for the city to offer for affordability. I think it's tremendous. I can't really speak about the design as being chosen. I think it's great, the design. I think that, you know, we all have our personal opinions on what might be pleasing or attractive, or taking away a garage to utilize the light rail. I do believe people also need to get to other places that are off light rail, and I think that we're blending projects into the neighborhood, which is very important to me, as we develop a little more density on the light rail, which those people directly across the street from light rail will more than likely use that, or be inclined to use that because of their location of work possibly off light rail. So, I like the fact that how the housing does blend in with the existing housing within that neighborhood. I know that the neighborhood, you know, obviously would enjoy having affordability still within the neighborhood, and also attractiveness of what those housing units are providing. So, I just, I probably wouldn't support a one-off of the design or redoing the design. I do agree with how it's being presented right now, and I can't. I do agree with how it's being presented right now, and I can't speak of who or what homeowners would choose those locations, but I know that we're still in a place where homeowners are still gonna have to deal with transportation, and I think it's adequate for what we're presenting for this neighborhood.
Thanks. Councilmember Aradona Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to concur with Councilmember Navarro. I guess my thought process is that being a buffer, it would be something that would attract hopefully families, you know, that maybe have kids, and maybe there is a compromise here, and we talked to Levon Manjula, that maybe he just has an idea or a plan for those individuals that maybe want to convert the garage down the road, I mean, just like our residents do now, who have the ability to make that conversion through the permit process. But maybe there's a simpler way to do that, or a design that, you know, you guys could incorporate, so that could happen down the road. I just don't want to limit it to only people that want to use the light rail, because I don't think that was the intent, at least it wasn't from my perspective. I like the way that it's presented, and the way that it's already done, and working with housing and their staff, but, you know, maybe there's a compromise in regards to those that, you know, don't feel the need for the garage down the road, but I think the way it's presented now, and I have to say, I enjoy my garage, and I like it, so I don't want to limit it to people that may want one and now they, now they don't have one. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to Councilmember Aradona Savage, which I agree with, there's two things. One, as Levon just corrected me, just to, so Levon and I had kind of worked through, and with Jeff, we were thinking about, you know, these houses were designed, as Councilmember Aradona Savage said, to, for workforce housing, so we were thinking people who may, working families that may be plumbers or construction workers, and they tend to have big trucks that have, as I know in my neighborhood, you know, expensive equipment, so that they want to put in a garage and not leave out, you know, in case, for whatever reason. So that's, that's the purpose of the garage, but, you know, there is a way, as Councilmember Aradona Savage said, and Ryan said to me, you know, whomever in the future could request a use permit to the city to kind of convert that garage to livable space, if that's something that happens in the future, but I think the plan is, we'll say, is to move with the garage, and then it has conversion options that, if that happens, or is necessary, again, since the City of Tempe owns that, you know, we could all work together to do that. And, you know, the garages are gonna be insulated, so they will be able to be convertible in that manner, which may help the Vice Mayor, if that comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with the project notes now. So I just let you know, Manjula.
Okay, thank you. Christian's on, if you want to see a couple of renderings. Christian, you want to go quickly, I think? Carla? Christian may be on, or I can just show you some renderings, if you'd like to see them.
Christian is unmuted.
Okay. Christian, do you want to go through this quickly, and maybe a couple of renderings? Christian?
I hear him barely.
Okay. Well, maybe I can do it, if you can hear me. Can you just go to the next slide, Greg?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear? Okay, can you hear? Christian, can you hear?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I can, but I can just show you the slides. So I just want to show you from the streetscape elevations, the one thing we've done is, you know, obviously, kind of a modern look, but try to add color, and you can see kind of the art scape and the art, the art murals that we've done along Apache to try to, in terms of just, you know, I'm a big fan of color, I think those of you who know me, so should add some color and a lot of landscape along the site. Next slide, Greg. And so this is just along Smith Road, and we can talk more about it, but, you know, just kind of in and out from articulation, certainly lots of landscaping, and then the entrance out of Smith Road. Next slide, please. Again, just this perspective from Apache Boulevard and Smith, you can both see the landscaping, kind of the articulation and the balconies, the bike racks that are gonna be along Smith, and there will be a bike lane that we're starting on the north side, I mean, to go north towards Smith, and I think we'd actually have talked to some other, some members in the city, and all the, from the Cul-de-sac side, maybe there's a way to do something so we can put a bike lane that will allow us to go from this site all the way to Tempe Marketplace, is something that we've been working with the city to think about. Next slide, please. And just to give you a sense, some of the breeze block and interior looking northeast from Apache Boulevard, the patio, and just some, you know, kind of the activity we've shown. Next slide, please. And then, this is the perspective from Smith Road, and I think we have one more. And then here's looking northeast from Apache Boulevard. So just to give you a sense of what it will look like along Apache, kind of showing you the landscape palette that we've chosen matches the Apache Boulevard character plan, and we've really worked with Phil and Matt, and some of the other people within feedback along, in terms of how, what the design looks like, that it matches the Apache Boulevard character. Next slide, I think we're, and this is just showing the building materials sample. But from that, I won't go any further. We're happy to answer questions, we're happy to talk about it next month. We really appreciate all the council's support, very excited, and it's nice to see you all.
Thank you, Ms. Vaz. All right, this is just the first hearing. We appreciate all the work you've put into this. Any other council members have any questions? If not, we're gonna move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember?
I just wanted to do a quick comment on the project. I think it's an excellent project, and I sure appreciate you working with our Human Services also to provide housing for the folks that need it. So thanks, Ms. Vaz, on the project.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you next month.
Yes, me, Mr. Mayor, Lauren?
Yes.
Thank you, Manjula, thank you, Ms. Vaz, for being one of the few developers that creatively looks at the spaces and cities' land and practical land they're using, and brings to us affordable housing. I'm so grateful. Of course, you're gonna totally expect my next question, but in the very least, are we gonna have a solar-ready roof for the Eastline Village, so we can, when times are better and we have utilities that are more open to distributed solar, that we can have solar placed?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes. We did anticipate that question, and we have already programmed that in, so we do have a solar-ready roof.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vaz.
Thank you.
Next item is Item 6B-2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Tempe City Code relating to the administration by amending Article Five relating to boards and commissions, et cetera, by adding Division Twenty-Four, sections two dash three nine nine point five through two dash three nine nine point seven, relating to the Audit Committee. The second final public hearing is scheduled for June 25th. This is a public hearing item. Madam Clerk, have you received any other comments?
None for this item.
Okay, I will close that portion for the public hearings. Look to my council colleagues. Seeing none, move on to ordinance and items for a second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C-1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a codex amendment for the medical marijuana amendment consisting of a change to the zoning and development code to eliminate the current maximum 25,000-square-foot size restriction for medical marijuana cultivation facilities in Tempe. The applicant is CJK Incorporated. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant, is he on, Madam Clerk, to make a statement?
I believe Mr. McLaren is on. Brian McLaren.
Hi, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is Brian McLaren from Zoned Properties. I thank you again for the audience, and appreciate the opportunity to be here. I believe there is a presentation from Ryan LeVake and staff related to questions at the first hearing. I do not have an updated presentation for you this evening beyond the presentation that was given at our first hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions and address any part of the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will look, Ryan, do you have any comments before I go to the public?
Yes, certainly. Ryan LeVake's Deputy Director in the Planning Division. I do have a brief presentation to provide you to report.
Okay.
Okay, and next slide. So this presentation outlines some information requested by council regarding cultivation facilities in Tempe. Currently, there are six approved cultivation sites. Their names and general street address locations are identified here. We actually have four of these active, and two of them are currently not active. Next slide. This map represents the Tempe cultivation sites that are eligible to have a cultivation facility, so this is, consists of general industrial and heavy industrial zone sites. We go to the next slide. That'll provide us a zoomed-in closer picture of where the current medical marijuana cultivation facilities are, two in the northeast industrial area, two in the northwest industrial areas, and two in that central area between Broadway and Southern. Next slide. So, hearing some concerns about outreach from the neighborhoods, we did some additional above and beyond code requirement notifications to neighborhood associations reps within the area, so we pulled out a half-mile radius and notified approximately 21 neighborhood association representatives. Most of those communications were done by email communication. At this time, we have not received any direct comments from the public regarding this codex amendment. Next slide. So of the cultivation facilities within Tempe, all of them are within the maximum allowed 25,000-square-foot size limitation of what you will note in here. I have done a assessment of the total building sizes for the cultivations that are currently in use, and what's proposed, and their total potential building area for the existing building. Some of them might be a portion of the building, some of them are single-tenant buildings, and some of them are also multi-tenant buildings with other tenants in those sites. Of the six sites, there are three of them that potentially would be eligible to go beyond the maximum 25,000 square feet if this codex amendment were to be approved. And that would consist of the Hannah Med site, and Cannaboose, and the Zen Panda property location. Next slide. So just a little quick update, cultivation in other jurisdictions, City of Phoenix has 38 approved cultivation sites, Mesa has eight, and Mesa currently has a similar size limitation that City of Tempe has, and we did get feedback from Scottsdale that they have one cultivation site in their city. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you, Ryan. Before we go to the council, I'm gonna, this is a public hearing item, I'm gonna ask our Madam Clerk, do we have any in the public that would like to speak on this?
No comment submitted for this item.
Okay, now I look to my council colleagues, I don't see any hands up. Councilmember Aradona Savage?
Mayor, I appreciate that, and to get my hand raised quick enough. I guess, I just want to give my two cents, and Ryan, thank you so much for doing that homework and giving us, you know, just a broader picture of what this might look like for our community. And I think many of you know my stance in regards to medical marijuana and easing the standards to allow medical marijuana, or at least more medical marijuana into the city. I didn't support the increase of dispensaries back when that happened, and I'm very concerned about supporting and easing off the stipulations for our medical marijuana facilities. And when, with that said, I always look, and I'm a big supporter of business, and I certainly understand that, and I understand supply and demand, too, and I realize, and I don't disagree, that obviously the demand has increased in regards to the number of medical marijuana cards that are held in the state, but at the same time, I have never, not one time, received an email saying that somebody was not able to fill their prescription, or get their prescription, when it comes to medical marijuana. So I, I'm not really sure in regards to when it comes to supply or demand, that I really see that the demand is not being met, that the supply seems to be adequate with that. I do know that being part of the Tempe Coalition, this is kind of one of the things that's been on their radar for many years, and that is basically ensuring that we keep alcohol and drugs away from our youth, and the survey that they do every year shows that medical marijuana has increased in our youth about 5% more over the last two years. And with that being said, of those kids that have actually replied to the survey and self-reported say that about 25% of those kids are getting their supply from medical marijuana. So for me, I look at it from a different, and my concerns in regards to easing off the standards, and not really seeing the need to do that, so, you know, just being consistent, and I'm sure you're not surprised, but I will not be supporting this agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aradona Savage. Councilman Navarro?
Yeah, a few questions. Ryan, you stated that with an approval, this would actually have an impact on how many sites, three, am I correct?
Yes, currently, three of the existing sites could expand beyond the 25,000-square-foot limit. Primarily, this would probably be more advantageous for new building sites that maybe have not yet opened up for cultivation facilities, with larger buildings could see more potential increase in additional cultivation facilities within the City of Tempe.
Right, and with that, with what you just said, what best guess, I guess, would, could there be a possibility, how many more sites?
Couldn't really say. There's an equal ratio of off-site cultivation sites that are eligible for each dispensary site. There's approximately 130 dispensaries statewide, so we get our fair share and distribution based on location proximity. If you're centrally located in the valley, it becomes economical for distribution purposes, but it's just to catch 22 on whether or not they want to locate and find a affordable site to open up their business.
And then, a couple more questions. And maybe this is for anyone on staff, I have no idea what the answer is. I know that with medical marijuana, there's, it's like a nonprofit, if I'm still correct on this, with potential givebacks to different programs, and I'm just curious, is, have we ever received any donations from, or gifts back to the city and various things? And maybe, maybe in supporting programs like the, you know, TCA, or, I'm sorry, TCC, and things with nonprofits, social services? I don't know if there's any answers to that.
I'm not aware of any specifically. I know the state does require the dispensaries to be nonprofit, and there are certain requirements through the state license process for that. The applicant representative maybe is aware of how money and donations are distributed, but I'm not specifically aware.
Is, yep, oh, the applicant's here?
Yeah, Councilmember Navarro, this is Brian McLaren from Zoned Properties. I can, I can only speak to our company that's active in the community. Our focus have been to work directly with organizations that we support our mission, support what we've always talked about at this council, sustainable development, local community efforts. So we are active donors and have been for many years, primarily through Arizona State University programs, such as the Sustainability Consortium, the ASU Real Estate Council, as well as just participating in many other community events. We're actually talking currently with the Ironman Foundation about sponsoring a sustainability-related event, if and when that event can reopen. Other than that, I can speak only to clients we work with in the local community and across the state. One of our clients, which is one of the six sites, does actively donate. I can certainly get information specific of what they've done over the past years operating within the City of Tempe, and I personally have been witnessing at events they've participated in, local community events.
Okay, thank you.
Just one second.
Yeah, go ahead, Joel.
No, I, thank you for sharing that information. I know that some benefits have gone to ASU, and that's great, and I'm just kind of curious on some benefits that have been received by Tempe on specific programs. I know we talk about things like pre-K and, and all that stuff, with the fact that the genie's out of the bottle, and medical marijuana is here, and, and it's been here for a while. I'm just not cur, I just not have heard of anything like that. The other thing is, with Councilmember Aradona Savage stated, being part of the coalition, which I am now, and as you can, myself, and knowing backgrounds of medical marijuana and the potency of different strands, and, but also for the medical benefits, too, and, but it is, has some accessibility to the youth, which is a little bit concerning, and being our city, kind of strategically in the middle of everything, and with other cities all around us, looking at Chandler, having none, and the outskirts of the East Valley, one, if any, I'm kind of really hesitant on, on expansion without the other cities having none at all. So I have real concerns about this. I think that at this point, I probably could not support this, as I see going forward. as I see going forward.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, Carla, do we have, I think we, there was an unfortunate mistake on public speakers. Do we have one?
We do. We have Keishon Johnson.
Okay. We will go ahead and allow that since you had them in a different folder, I understand. So Keishon, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, guys, good evening. My name is Keishon Thompson. I'm here representing the Tempe Coalition, whose mission is to reduce youth risk behaviors and promote health and wellness through awareness, education, advocacy, and connecting to community resources. As a recent graduate of Tempe High School and incoming ASU student in the fall, I am also the co-chair of the Tempe Coalition's Youth Committee and recipient of the Coalition's Youth Champion Award in 2019. I am here tonight to talk to you about the proposed amendment to abolish the size restriction for marijuana cultivation facilities here in Tempe. While we know that there aren't size limitations for cultivation facilities in nearby Phoenix and Scottsdale, we feel that getting rid of the restrictions here only allow the marijuana dispensary industry the opportunity to increase their businesses here and throughout Arizona. According to 2018 Arizona Youth Surveys, we know that 75% of Tempe teens see little or no harm to using marijuana on a regular basis. We also know the impact of marijuana on the adolescent developing brain can decrease a teen's IQ by as much as eight points. This can be the difference between being employable or being able to function effectively in society. As well as self-reported by Tempe teens, they're using very high levels of THC, the mind-altering substance, and marijuana, which can lead to psychotic breaks and lifelong serious mental health issues, including schizophrenia. Tempe teens report that they're putting these THC concentrates in e-ciruits and smoking them in the classroom. Because these THC concentrates are odorless, they go undetected by teachers and parents. As a coalition, our main goal is to keep our teens safe from illicit drugs. We know from our data that one in four Tempe teens have used marijuana in the past 30 days. We all need to be diligent in ensuring that we keep marijuana out of the hands of our Tempe sons and daughters. If you have any additional questions, please contact our program director, Hillary Cummings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments under Item 6C1?
Mr. Mayor, it's Lauren.
Vice Mayor.
I'll be voting, I'll be voting in support of it. I don't think we can judge for the business what their market decision should be. It's a choice for them to make. There's a statement made that there's, I don't know that that's true. That's not for me to judge, but if they're wanting this, then I think they probably see the market and where it's leading to. And marijuana, medical marijuana is legal in our state and was approved by a large majority of our voters. So I will be voting yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? I'm looking for a motion on Item 6C1.
So moved.
There's a motion moved by Vice Mayor QB to approve Item 6C1. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Keating. Is there any other comments or discussion? We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. Councilman Navarro? Councilmember, Councilman Navarro? Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Chin?
Nay.
Vice Mayor QB?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Aronado Savage?
No.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams and Councilwoman Navarro, I need your vote.
Councilmember Navarro is a no.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams? Right now, I vote, I vote yes, so it's three.
Aye, sorry about that.
All right, motion passes four to three. Moving on to the next item. Item 6C2 is hold a second and final public hearing to receive public comment on and resolution authorizing the annual Community Development Block Grant Home Program, Emergency Solutions Grants and Emergency Solutions Grants Coronavirus Action Plan for fiscal year 2020-21 with the approval of funding activities, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and consolidated plan for fiscal years 2020-25. This is a public hearing item. Is Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No, we do not.
All right. Do not. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? Is there a motion on Item 6C2?
So moved, Lauren QB. Second.
It's been moved by Council, Vice Mayor QB, second by Councilmember Chin. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Councilman Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Keating?
Aye.
Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Aronado Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. All right, we're going to go ahead and go through current events and announcements. Councilmember Navarro?
None today, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Keating? Councilmember Chin?
I just have one.
Okay.
And I think there's a slide. There it is. This past weekend, several of us, including you, Mayor, several of the council members participated in some mini parades and ceremonies as we drove around and awarded some of our neighbors with their, for their work. And I wanted to thank all of the staff who worked so hard to coordinate the event. They had three or four different routes and had to keep us all in line. And I would also like to again congratulate all of the award winners and thank them for their service to their neighbors and neighborhoods.
Thank you, Lauren. You might have to meet yours, please. Anything else? Councilmember Chin?
Sir.
All right. Vice Mayor QB, you have any announcements?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And there should be graphic coming up. And there we go. Yeah, I just wanted to proudly say that we have, applications are now open for the Housing Choice voucher waitlist through the City Tempe Housing Authority and through the Housing Authority of Maricopa County. So it's an entirely online application process. The people that need assistance can request that. So the applicants will be randomly selected by lottery. There's a lot of details. And they're found, you can look at our City of Tempe Facebook site or go online to tempe.gov. But this is good news for our residents who are in need of more affordable housing because the numbers of the vouchers are expanding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Aronado Savage, do you have any comments?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I have several announcements. Summer 2020 classes and camps are happening now. So online registration is open for summer 2020 classes and camps. Visit tempe.gov/play to find in-person and virtual offerings for fitness, arts, and culture, sports, and adaptive recreation, STEM, and more. In-person registration will be available on June 15th. Additional programs will be added on June 22nd. Second, the Virtual Tempe Festival of the Arts is happening. The Spring Tempe Festival of the Arts is virtual this year. Our art community needs your support more than ever. Connect with our artists on social media and shop online. And you can visit tempefestivalofthearts.com for more information. Thank you, those are the end of my announcements.
All right, thank you. I don't have any. Now I turn to Madam Clerk, Ms. Reese. Do you have any comment cards for public appearance?
Mayor, we do. We have five to read into the record.
Okay.
So first is from Nevin Elizabeth Burns. She asks, can we implement a citizen review board to operate independently of the courts and other law enforcement agencies? This would be a step in the right direction for achieving justice for all Tempe residents and help combat any discrimination by law enforcement based on race. Next is from Caitlin Keverly of Tempe. And she writes, hi, Tempe City Council. My name is Caitlin Keverly and I am a lifelong resident of Tempe, ASU graduate. I am contacting you regarding the budget for the 2020 versus 21, to 2021 fiscal year, specifically the 102,823,686 allocated to the Tempe Police Department. I ask that you instead redirect these funds to the Community Services Fund and the Human Services Fund, which are currently only being allocated 39,874,550 and $46,398,072 respectively. The police are being overfunded and these community-centered funds are vastly underfunded. The overfunding of police is forcing them to take on more of a role than they are trained or equipped to handle. This money ought to be used in a manner that limits the risks of Black and Brown community members and works against the systemic racism that has too long been perpetuated by current police funding. Defunding the police is the only way to begin saving Black lives, so many of which have already been lost to this failed system. The Tempe City Council should prioritize the community's universal needs, such as adequate and affordable housing, education, after-school care, mental health and trauma services, and accessible healthcare. Defunding Tempe PD and investing in community services should be a budget priority. People are marching in the streets because they know that these actions will result in a healthier and more just society. As representatives of the very members of our community that are marching for justice, it is the duty of the Tempe City Council to acknowledge the violence that the Tempe Police Department has inflicted on Black and Brown communities and make tangible changes to the city's budget. As a Tempe resident, I ask that you vote against the tentative 2020 to 2021 budget, defund the police, and invest in our community. She had marked that for the general council meeting, so we read that there. I do have another item here from David Wright regarding implicit bias in justice workers. He writes, given the importance of implicit bias in decision-making, which affects the lives of people who interact with police and the justice system, I support assessing all justice workers using instruments like those at Harvard's Project Implicit, especially including this one about race. He gives a couple URLs that I'll provide to council. There are a variety of others which should also be considered. These tests can be part of comprehensive assessment to determine needs for training to recognize and mitigate implicit bias that could lead to preferential treatment or selective abuse of authority. Using these tests to assess candidates for jobs in police work, for example, would provide information to make well-informed hiring decisions and determine who is a better fit with the culture of the department in a similar manner to aptitude tests. Next item is from Sandra Mesa of Phoenix, Arizona. She writes, the ones in power know they are wrong, know what they are doing, and know that they are exploiting the American people. Ignore our demands and you will meet who I am. Listen, understand, and do something to change it, or you will regret it. Enough of the hate, it's time for love and justice. And if you won't give it to us, then we will take it. Justice for George Floyd, justice for Breonna Taylor, justice for lives that have been taken and have unknown, justice for all and not just the filthy rich. We want real justice, and if you won't be part of it, then you are not part of the people. And we will not know when your day comes. With God on our side, we fear nothing, and we pray you find your way to the light. If you don't fear the people, then fear our God, for we are his people. And as long as we roam this earth, evil will take no place here. With God as my light and Jesus as my savior, I rebuke you in all that is holy and remember this warning. Change your ways, demon, for there is always time until it's too late. Amen. And the last card comes from Talen Burns, resident of Tempe. I would like to see the implementation of a citizen review board to operate independently of the courts in the case when an officer takes the life of an individual, especially an unarmed one. And that's it.
All right. With that, our meeting is adjourned. And we need a couple minutes to turn back around for the Real Slado Community Facilities District Board meeting, special meeting. With that, we're adjourned, our regular council meeting.